Definitely.
Miss News, the meeting is live.
I know.
Yeah, I was struggling too, don't feel bad.
Everything for me was going wrong this morning, it starts time.
The meeting is live.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to the March thirty first meeting of the Riley County Commissioners, please stand and join.
Red legions, be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One, um, a public comment. Um, so commissioners.
I don't really have a lot, um, well, I think of significance as I did meet with Hannah on Friday to discuss some things in her office, including the recently non-passed uh SCR fifty eleven, I think. Well, that thing went down in flames in the house after they brought it back up and.
Which one was that?
The um, the appraisal cap.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it failed in the Senate and then the Senate brought it back up and it passed and then it went over to the House and it just went downhill, so um, I don't know that we're gonna probably see anything else of any relevance at this point in time, I think they're coming back from the veto session and that's it.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
Yeah, so it might hit that ninety day deadline after all, so good, good for them. Um, but yeah, good to catch up, got some updated numbers, thank you for that, that's gonna help me in a couple of presentations I'm gonna be giving here. Hopefully I don't mess it up too bad, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Um, generally speaking, the weekend was pretty quiet, didn't have much going on, watched a lot of basketball, although it didn't go all that well. Um, lucky lost pretty bad to Tennessee, hard to do team three, I don't know what that was, um, I hadn't seen him play that bad all season, but guess that's how it ends, um, always hurts to lose two in rival two, so uh, anyway, watched K State Girls on Saturday, that was a really a good game, um, they just kinda came up short at the end there, um, felt really bad, I was hoping they could just take that next step and um, um, was up and down there, they had to leave at halftime, um, USC came out in the second half and kinda looked like they might just uh, take it to him and they fought back and then late in the fourth quarter, they kinda gave up a little bit and then came back and then just, you know, just um, is what it is, so anyway, um, really proud of the season that they had, they you know, fought through some injuries and fought through some key things and were able to make it as far as they did, so um, now I guess it's time for baseball, so and speaking of, K State swept Texas Tech over the weekend.
That was big.
Um, but Texas Tech isn't doing that great this, this year, but uh, they're eight one in Big Twelve off to their best start, I think ever in conference play. So we'll see how that goes, um, Royals and the Braves didn't get off to a good start uh, over the weekend. San Diego swept the Braves and Royals just looked flat. Um, hopefully they pick up on the pitching side though, so they're playing Cleveland, Cleveland's pretty good, we'll just see how it goes. As long as they don't go over April, they should be okay, so. And that's about all I got, wish we had some rain over the weekend, uh, really would help my allergies at this point in time, but yeah, yeah, exactly right, yeah. So maybe tomorrow night, we'll see. That's all I got.
Okay, well, listen, Friday I took a tour of the new EMS building, um, building's really designed well and and will be a great addition to our county buildings and ambulance system. Uh, they're doing their la- they were doing their last tours for community leaders over the weekend and then flooring, same flooring should start this week. That afternoon I took dogs event and worked with three landscape people to get pricing to line care this summer, I can't do it this year.
Yes, I still said goats is the way to go.
I'd like to get a little goat in here, but then what do you do with them after they've eaten all the grass?
Then you barbecue.
Problem solved.
You gotta come over and take care of that?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
It's barbecue season.
Okay. Tell that to goat lovers. Anyway, let's see, let's see, Saturday evening, I attended a Democratic Party fundraising event at the Universalist Church. Uh, Dr. Judy Hugley, uh, for uh, for Godmothers, Kathy Ray of the Crisis Center and Kansas Senator Donald Sykes made some presentations along with uh, the uh, other elected officials in attendance. I gave an update on projects, the county has done with our funding and then some other issues that we're looking at, so it was really good, place was packed. Must race them. Um, Sunday I went to church services and then went to lunch at Bootsees.
Oh.
Previously Coco Ballows.
Oh.
That's, I don't, I didn't catch why they named it that, but and um, uh, with my lunch bunch, they have a really good menu. Haven't changed the inside a whole lot, two chairs are different seating, little seat, different seating, but but it's good to have that open, it's a nasty day to be out trying to find a place to park to.
Oh, yeah.
Cold and rainy and it wasn't really raining recently.
Just enough to make things dirty.
Yeah. Um, later I enjoyed um, first meal with fresh asparagus from my garden. That wasn't great, you're probably getting some too. Well, root is sweet potato.
Sweet potatoes don't really do with goat.
Okay.
Why is it very, it's just empty, I don't know about that big.
Really, well mine was starting to pop up, you know, like crazy, so leaving all that stuff, you know, the old, old stuff already.
Lobster burgers.
Oh, yeah. Actually we got some purple wrap.
Good stuff.
One of those came, but anyway, that's uh, that's all I have.
Well, well. I also watched a lot of basketball over the weekend, watched most of the Big Twelve teams, men and women, a lot of good close games. In Texas Tech had Florida.
I thought that too.
I know.
Couldn't finish it, but both of them, was it Thursday and Friday? Friday and Saturday, that's the games lasted until twelve o'clock. The last games, last twelve o'clock here. And I stayed up to watch them.
You didn't have anything else, I mean, yeah.
That's my bedtime.
But like I said, they're all good games, then did a little, tried a little work in the yard and got some stuff done, but finally gave in to win one. I just got tired of being beaten up out there. When to get started.
Which, ready? First item from business meeting, Commissioners need a motion to approve twenty twenty five week of the young child proclamation.
Okay, I would make a motion to um, to approve the twenty twenty five week of the young child proclamation.
Second.
Moved in second to pre. Twenty twenty five week of the young child proclamation, all in favor?
All three please sign. Next Commissioner, need a motion to approve highway use permit, Granny and Richter Farms LLC permission to bore six inch inch irrigation pipe under May Day Road according to details shown on that.
Okay, make a motion to approve the highway use permit, Granny Richter Farms LLC permission to complete the work as outlined in the permit.
I would second that. Alright, yeah.
Been moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit, Granny Richter Farms, permission to complete work as outlined in permit, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign.
Next Commissioners, need a motion to approve contract grant BHS Construction Inc. for Riley County Plaza East Window Replacement Project, amount of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Is it six hundred and ninety? Okay.
Is that without the glazing on it?
Built in there, it's just not the we didn't go with alternate one, that would have been the special windows for doubt this floor.
Okay. So the glazing will be like a tinting or what, it's not the bulletproof thing?
Right, just a tinting.
Okay. We can see out, but they can't see anyways, that.
I think that's the idea. As long as they don't put it on backwards.
I have to think they know what they're doing, but yeah, okay.
Okay, I would make a motion to um, approve the um bid from BHS Construction for the CPA window replacement project.
Same. Been moved and seconded, approve the contract with BHS Construction for the CP window replacement uh, for six hundred and ninety thousand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Of course.
Just for some money. Et cetera.
Uh, potential adjutant to the Commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference? Commissioners, I got one uh, small request for yous. Uh, the benefits of the clerks and elections separating far outweigh the adverse things, but we have a training coming up for our May conference. And so for s- uh, staff to go to it, I request to close the office on Thursday and Friday, May first and second, so the election staff can take the election portion of the conference, it's not the entire conference, but just the election portion, so if that's okay with the board by statute, yeah, just the elections.
That's a may day and a halfs.
Yeah. And if that's okay.
Good.
Do we need a motion?
The consensus is fine, consensus is fine. Then Commissioners, we have Mr. Parker or possibly Mr. Hanson at nine o'clock.
If Haley's comment.
Every once in a while, oh, pop it. They get to see the remodel for the first time this morning and every time someone sees it, they're impressed. Oh, this building can actually look like this. That's what everyone does. They're like, oh, this building does have hope.
Did you get a chance to look at all the windows?
Yeah, I know. You need to, there's some great views from up there.
Serious.
There's a great view.
You go to the end of the hallway and look down this window up here, you can basically see all the way out to Jeffrey.
Wow.
I'd like to see a patio garden up there, go up there and sit, sent in.
Very nice.
Have a coffee bar.
Yeah, a little different from when the wind was blowing real bad, part of the like, the vinyl that's like peeling off, like flew into my office.
Well, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have that fixed.
That wind was pretty crazy, you know, in all things.
It was going in circles.
Yeah.
Was, you know, I was out in the yard, the wild blew from the northwest and southwest and the east, it was just like crazy.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it was blowing my hair around, when it starts blowing my hair around, you know it's windy. Ain't that right, John?
Yeah, in other news, I should be moving into my duplex in June.
Oh, well earlier.
Yeah, two months early.
Nice.
Good for you. I'll be one of your, your neighbor, I think, yeah, I'll be pretty close, Anderson and Sinek, I'm on Highland Ridge Drive.
Oh, I know exactly.
Yeah, I'm right off of Highland Ridge Drive.
There you go.
Are you on the upper side of it?
Uh, I'm like a pretty close to where it stops from the duplexes and goes to.
Single family.
Uh, yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, so you're down close to Sinek then?
Yeah.
Okay, cause it's like six blocks to, to where it starts.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on the sixth block.
Yeah.
Oh, Christ, you have a dog?
Yep, sure do.
I'll say, yeah, walking around.
Yeah, he sure will, and he's a Australian Shepherd.
So many Australian, I should do some zoomies together.
He'll be fond of it, that's for sure.
Oh, that's a great place to.
But if you ever need a goat barbecue, you'll know what it does.
I got, I got the grill.
Don't say that to my daughter, she's got three.
Oh, no. Perfect size, yeah.
Well, there are cute.
They're only pets until you, until you become hungry.
Somebody had that one place there on Anderson Head with a stroll.
Keep the grass there.
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, my brother-in-law bought a herd of about forty that out by Old Bird that cleared his pastures and they just had a bunch of little ones and we just went up pick grain kids out there to see. Still little?
They're really cute.
The little ones are, yeah, they're, they were just born during that cold, cold snap that we had, so you know, they lost some during that, but twenty degree weather we had. Yeah, the little ones are really cute. Like, fun and they're being, you know, to go farming, so.
Well, I guess you can rent her herd to come clear. Come and bring them over and let them eat all the grass and then leave.
Yeah.
All the brush.
I mean, it's down, come over and let's. It is stay in one spot. After fencing.
Fencing, yeah. Goats are destructive too, they wanna get in somewhere.
My neighbors love that.
They are a strong little animal.
Really fun to watch those, little, little ones always, they'll jump up on the high line.
They hop around, they kinda hop off the floors, they're cute, the baby ones are.
Thank you. So your, starting shepherd is a full-size one, it's a long tail.
Oh, yeah, we let him keep his tail thankfully, although that was a bit more of a pull than you would have thought. To get people to not cut it off.
I know.
Um, yeah, no, there, a lot of them will just be like breed standard, can't, can't mess with it, if you ask, no.
I know, many of these animals do, I've seen a lot of big ones.
Yeah, well, I learned it's, since they're a cattle dog or herding dog, they don't want it to get accidentally stepped on or broke or anything like that, so I think that's why traditionally they just do away with it. It's just kind of a standard, Rottweiler used to be that too, and Rottweiler are actually a hurt belt too.
Is it really?
That's where they originated from Germany, but now they're getting away from docking the Rottweiler's tail. To me, they look funny because I used to have one with the tail, you know, but.
Yeah.
Well, it's just another, I mean, some of those tails and the hair, you know, they're, they're just get rolling, it'll be hard to.
He requires constant maintenance, that is for sure.
But it's not too bad, he, he doesn't challenge her. Well, I brush him anyway, slows down.
I'm jealous. I am jealous, but that's okay. I don't mind.
What color is he?
He is red marl, so yeah, so he's got the red and then the white and a little bit of some brown in there.
Brown.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah, we got him from a breeder in Arkansas when we lived in Arkansas. He is three years old now, yeah. Nice.
So maybe they can be buddies.
Yeah, I, I'm all for it, he is honestly to, to a fault, he is a non-confrontational dog. And we've taken him to parks where, you know, sometimes you have some more aggressive dogs. He just won't, he won't fight back and it's like, dude, come on, at least, at least. But it's not, not a bad thing.
No. Well, they're great dogs, really smart.
And I think I wanna get, now since the new place we're gonna be has a fence, um, fenced in yard, we're probably gonna get a mini. So.
There's a lady, I don't know if she still does it, but very much. But.
Yeah.
No, she doesn't anymore, but she had some minis and she had all sorts.
Well, I'll have to keep that in mind, I have to ask about that.
It was nice, cause she had a separate, she, she had a separate uh, little house for the dogs, it was air-conditioned and heated, so the mothers would go out there and have the babies and then they'd learn to go outside with the mommy, go to the bathroom. So the house training was like so minimal.
Yeah, that, that makes it easy, that's always the hardest part, that's for sure. My, my girlfriend Casey, she uh, that was her first time raising a puppy. And there was a time where she's like, I don't know if I can do this. Yeah, little sharp teeth.
Oh, yeah.
Very destructive.
Yeah, you buy a toy and they're gone, they're just, you're shredded.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Puppies are cute, but they're work, they're a lot of work. Yeah. So she found out.
Practice for kids. That's what they say.
For kids. They're exactly the same, I've trained many dogs and if you know, I've had four kids, they, they is, just consistency and they're exactly the same, I wouldn't tell anyone that.
Notice he didn't say he trained his kids.
Oh, I did, I trained my kid.
Training kids.
You have to train them. My philosophy is uh, the quality of dog is the same as the quality of kid, the amount of time you invest in it, what you got.
That's very true.
Very true, we like take, we like taking them out to Fairmont Park around here.
It's the dog park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't really searched for any other dog parks that we had yet, but.
Where'd you go?
Fairmont. Yeah, that's.
That's the best one.
Yeah. I like it. There's so many areas around the lake you can go take them out to, to walk and stuff and.
Keep that in mind. Another good one too is up in Water Park.
Water Park?
I asked Vivian about it.
I forget about that one, do you? City one, I, you know, I'm not aware of the city ones. Is that an off leash?
So far.
It can't, yeah, if you're on a different side of it, I kind of sandwiched in between the residential area, but if you're kinda down in the valley down there, I'm sorry, I used to take all of our dogs out growing up.
Well, on the path that goes to Annaburn, they, they mowed all that down in the floodway, the, the little pond area they have, they mowed all the grass down, so you can let the dog.
Oh, wow, really?
Yeah, I don't know if, if they're gonna let it come back or what, but the whole thing they, they brought in.
It was like a marshland down there, basically.
Yeah, it was, and, and uh, so they mowed it all down, it's really strong now, but I don't know if they're gonna let, let all the grass come in.
There are a couple of things that.
The dogs turn around, it's great.
Yeah, I do. Being at all.
At least there's, there's.
I'll keep all the snakes and other things out too.
Yeah, I already saw.
Alligators. Twenty twenty.
Saturday I was walking up. Looked like there was one pickup stick, this little snake laying there in the yard.
Yeah.
Coming out of garter snake, yeah, orange and red.
Well, they got, also that pond down, they had a lot of copperheads came out of there.
There's copperheads everywhere in this area. They're thick. Those are the nice ones, right?
Yeah. You can go up and pet them, they're really nice, yeah. Yeah.
The one that fit me wasn't so nice. Oh, they serve a purpose, they're good for rubbing the spit. They're not around, say, other, they're, they're in trouble.
They're eating rattlesnake or?
No, I'd like to. I'd like to, I'd like to try.
Said I try.
Yeah, I try. Good? Uh, uh, I have.
That's one thing I haven't, but I, I would.
I know Gator's good.
I have real Gator.
Alligator's really good. Oh, yeah. That has been food. Have you had goat?
Yeah. Yeah, goat, just about goat.
Well, I'm gonna have to skip on that. But um, Jacob Vance, a deputy county counselor here, um, just a couple of things on mine that I wanted to bring up. Um, I don't know if the Commissioners are aware, but we did receive a uh, annexation.
Um, I don't know if the commissioners are aware, but we did receive a annexation uh notice by the city last week. I'm in the process of getting everything together, uh I'll present a card to you guys on Thursday this week. Um, our deadline, we have thirty days from the day to receive, uh which is March twenty fourth is when we received it, so we have until April twenty third.
That should require a public hearing.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so um legally, we don't necessarily have to have a uh public hearing. However, it will probably be in the best interest that we do, um that would we afford everybody ability to speak. Um, usually the law requires if it's forty plus acres that's being annexed is that we go through the hearing process, but this is only point nine eight. Um, but again, we're still probably gonna go ahead and just make it a public meeting anyways. Um, just to give people an opportunity and, you know, open fair practice. Um, so that'll be a part of the car that I present to you guys on um Thursday this week. Any other quick questions on that? Uh, and then one other thing uh would be that Brian and I are presenting at the County Clerks Association this Friday, uh teaching some folks about open meetings and open records and all that lovely fun local government law. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention as well. Um, as far as that goes, I I don't really have anything else to report on my end. If uh y'all have any questions on anything going on, happy to stand for questions.
Modifications they were looking at.
I don't know if anything's passed, but I know at least the modifications to the core uh regarded mostly fee generation. Yeah, they're they're minor, I think uh the core one was regarding electronic copies of not charging people fees for electronic copies. Uh, which most people didn't do, but um for the few folks out there that did, they wanted to squash that. Uh, I'm assuming, uh coma, actually, there is an interesting uh adjustment to make it there to executive sessions which allow a five minute uh buffer time. So where if we finish five minutes early, we can go ahead and leave that executive session so long as it passes. So as long, and I and I think it it has pretty strong report. Uh, so I think that's very likely. But as far as coma core goes, that's that's the only bills that I'm tracking, there might be a couple that I haven't, I've missed, but.
That Sandborn Institute, I saw Brian's name was on it, I'm actually presenting it this afternoon and Susan's attending that this week is where Susan does.
Is that here?
Yeah, it is. A long, long drive for us today.
It's good service.
It's at the conference center.
We got a conference this month too, that's requires a long drive.
Man, they're starting today? They're going all the way through the week?
Yeah, it's a week long thing. I've been through it decades ago. Yep, it is a long week.
And they decided to put the legal stuff at the end?
Good luck, gentlemen.
Oh yeah, it's a three year program, it's a certification program. That's Sandborn Institute's put on through Wichita State University.
County or else?
County clerks, county clerks and election officials. Certification program that they have that three year and then they have a master program as well also. It's all put together by Wichita State. Sorry, Brian.
Oh heavens, no, I all I was gonna say is that I stand for any questions, I didn't have, Jake, it's, this is the, I've had some trouble today. Um, this is one of the many benefits of having such a competent deputy is that he just stepped in without any issue whatsoever. So thank, if there's any.
Oh, you didn't see the live stream?
I am, I will, I will throw some uh props out to Rich uh for this. My, my dad just, my dad taught at Sandborn forever and I've done a couple of presentations in the past. But it is so valuable for our clerks to have writ uh to have someone of Rich's caliber uh uh giving insight into how to do the job. Right, uh that's, that's gonna be fantastic. And so the, the great, this Ivy of Kansas is one of the bottles for how to do this education and I think other people do too. And so the tradition of that lives on and yeah, that's cool. Anyway, my little plug for the Sandborn Institute and my alma mater Wichita State, go Sharks.
Jake was talking about them earlier, baseball. I think we play this week.
Oh gosh, I think I need to go to that game.
Next mission we have Amanda Webb at nine twenty six.
Does anybody need to talk with me about anything?
I have one thing.
Oh, okay, alright, sure.
Okay, but it should be short.
Hope I have enough meds on board.
Big players, but. They added another new one, added one over the weekend.
Good one?
Yeah, four star out of Oklahoma, she made the Auburn commitment, they fired their coach. As he said, he's got three out of the top sixty high schoolers for next year coming in.
That's good, that's good.
Which, I mean, I'm sure it'll take a dip, you know, get adjusted, but.
Oh yeah, sure, they had the high school game.
Although, that was a, one, was one or two of those USC players were fresh.
Two, they were unreal, it's, there's, there's a very small percentage there. No matter what the sport is, prepared from high school to start at college, very few, it's just the speed is so different.
One of them girls, it's her second game all season that she played. Oh, she wouldn't have been injured.
I don't know if she'd been injured, but yeah. Yeah, those real good.
You watched Duke, that flag, Cooper flag. He should be a high school senior, he left her, left school early. Yeah, he's gotta be the probably the player of the year, he, he just turned eighteen in December.
Say the U S C women's team, they were tall. You talk about a tall women's team.
Cause we have a pretty tall team.
And that makes, that really shrinks the court as far as making passes and stuff and you could tell it had an impact.
I thought they had some length, just.
That's I mean, tall, that gives you that length, yeah.
That's what, you know, the men's final four is all for, number one seed, they said it's first, the last, the only, it's just second times happened, the other time was in two thousand eight, they said the finals were also in San Antonio that year. But it looks, and first the women's pretty usually.
One wide picks is still in it and that's Houston.
If you've gone chalk at at the first. Is especially about women's is always that, sixteen is always.
My daughter in law has a pick, has three of her four in it.
I got three or four too.
Yeah, I had Michigan State. I just saw the five minutes to fill mine out.
I didn't put much thought into it this year and of course, this is the year I get three out of four. I've got Duke winning it.
Usually when I don't put much thought into it, it's when I do it the best, didn't work this year. I saw it and I thought at the end they had it.
I almost pressed our wound, played that most USC, cause I mean, there's top level in the women's game, that it's hard to beat, there's five, ten teams that are always gonna be. Cause like I said, there's only so many, although it's getting better for a while, it used to be there were. Two teams.
Yukon and Yukon. Yeah, Tennessee was, yeah, you're right.
Tennessee was the first one and then you, but now South Carolina, but who's the state league's really got them.
She does.
But in USC used to, they kinda go down, they used.
Top fifty uh transfer.
High school.
She high school?
Yeah, she was, she was. Yeah, it's a three out of about fifty or sixty, they said, of high school.
Ten recruiting class for sure.
They get a couple.
Might be.
Transfers like he did this year, he did a really good job this year.
I thought so too. Might be a little down next year, but I think the next couple of years after that are gonna be really good, it's just gonna be hard to replace Iuka and Serena.
So consistent.
She has the attitude, you know, when they needed to score, I noticed every time she would drive in and just get a layup.
That's what's amazing about her, she will just drive, she'll turn around and face up and just drop it.
She, she figures out a way to get close to the rim and get an easy two point shot.
She's got all the tools.
But also she stopped about eight or ten feet. Nobody shoots that shot anymore. They kinda let it go.
Well, you usually play in that two, three zone and that's usually the one spot in the zone that you have open, so you can take it and knock it, take it and knock it.
Walker is my favorite player, I mean, but I like Walker, she's, she's got an attitude, she and a little bit, she reminds me of when my daughter played, cause she was, my daughter was like that on defense, she just was ruthless. All over people, like I say, being the youngest of four, she didn't have, you know, she in junior high. Of course, junior high girls are pretty, and she was a good player then. And we had, they had a really good coach in our junior high, and seventh, eighth grade, she'd be, she was a guard, but she and with the press sometimes, but after they got ahead, then he'd say, no, you can't pass, you know, that'd be half quarter. And there was this one game, every time this guy brought the ball up, Nancy just took it, you know. And she got there and Nancy just stood at the half court line, this coach wouldn't let me go. This girl stood there and dribbled, finally got a ten second, cause she was, he was trying to go down to her. And then finally the coach said, no, you can't go up past the three point line, but she was, she did not like that. Cause she wanted to go get that ball. And she was a rebounder, cause she was not the shortest, but one of the shorter, probably second or third shortest player on the team, but she was also the second leading rebounder. She, she can get in there and seem to have no, you know, part of it is just knowing.
Knowing the right spot, not getting too far under the basket's the biggest thing with young kids.
She seemed to be able to do that. She was a lot of fun basketball, but then soccer was her. She was all state, state. I don't know if she went to, she went to Johnson County, which was one of the top programs. At the time.
They're good at a lot of athletics.
Third game of Chicago, she wrecked her knee.
Yeah, my girls toured Johnson County, they're looking to go for basketball, it's a nice college. They're really aggressive on their sports.
Kalen, how you doing?
Good.
Jen, Jen went to Johnson County one year, she said it was out, out in the pastures. So she drove out into the country to go to it at that time.
Yeah, yeah, the rest of the county kinda caught up to.
Just like Seago used to be out in the pastures, you know.
So weird to drive by there now.
That's what I was gonna, speaking of weird to drive by, all that's left of the commerce. Yeah, I had to take my wife's vehicle and that's why I've got a vehicle parked out there this morning and the lady asked me if I'd seen it, she drove me by and all that's there is the elevator shaft now.
They did a lot this weekend.
They do with all that stuff.
Oh, it's all piled up in there behind the fencing, they got a lot of stuff to remove, yeah.
Wonder if they took things out before this toilet.
Oh yeah. A lot of it went over to stores on Hartland and a couple other places, yeah. Saw, somebody took a picture of the doors or something they got over there, so, you know, they saved some of it.
That building was just built so unique, it looked like it was bigger than it was, you went up in the elevator shaft and there's not much on the upper floors. It was just built too unique.
Grandfather's room, that's why, that's why I'm big Devon, not from here, but from, I think it was their dad. Went through there and that's why.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, they're. They're not, well, they're, yeah, they're, they put all kinds of money into that stadium.
I played traveling league there, so it's not like.
And then they got banned. Now they're, I don't know if they're.
They're not that much better. Kinda went downhill a little bit, and they had a couple of good years there.
Name Gene. He had a system going there.
Yeah, he did, and it went down in like the, they just became mediocre in like the later years. And then once they settled into mediocrity, it was just, they just haven't found it.
Now they kinda switched lenses there, went from baseball to basketball there and.
I was disappointed your alma mater felt short in basketball, the men's team. They went really far, Washington did. That coach there's done a good job that you, I think I heard a few years, several years back, but now he's, he's, he's got a mold in there.
Couple of K State final four teams.
Yeah, that's right, he tried forever to get here. Or Steve? Cause that's uh, he was basketball and she was playing volleyball, that's right. Dad is a coach.
Alright, Amanda.
Good morning, Commissioner Samantha, I'm planning director. I am here with a kind of a pre notification for you folks for the Peterson Ranch Unit One Street Benefit District. In your pocket, they submitted um the petition signed by at least fifty one percent of property owners of funding the subject roads. Also included um our policy um on uh creating benefit districts, so you can just kinda see. Um, just a refresher for how all of that works, so. Um, the next step would be to have a public hearing, but again, we wanted to um bring this to you first, just to kind of give you a heads up that we've received it. We have the P U D map in there, so you can see what the roads are that we're talking about. Um, the Budget and Planning Committee did review this, I believe, last week, and again, wanted to just provide you a kind of a pre-notification, I'm calling it. Um, and we're ready to move to the um public hearing, nothing's been scheduled yet. Again, wanted to get this before you folks, for any questions or any comments before we move to that step, but that is what would be next. Um, so again, everything is there in your packet, you can see what we're looking to do and what the map is, so if you have any questions, there's a few of us here. From Budget and Planning, and we can answer those questions for you.
Well then, will they contract or do we, we contract the road work?
We'll, we'll bet it up.
We bet it up, okay. See, then plan on doing the next phase then, cause that was part of the requirements that's wrote at the end before you did.
Yeah, he's, he's done a couple more subdivisions, if you will, if you remember in the beginning, he was gonna do a whole. Big, another one, um, but kind of put, you know, a little bit of breaks on that after he did this one, but he's done a couple lot, um. Subdivisions over the last couple of years, so that's better adjacent to this one, so at this point, that's all we know of. Until he comes in and wants to do more.
Yeah, it's been pretty successful.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of houses up there, pretty.
Yeah. Yeah, so now it's time for Peter, so. Yeah, it looks like most of them, that's for.
I think he'll get to that twenty-one.
Couple houses every year.
No, I think should be the natural next step, so yeah, that's, sounds good to me.
Is there anything, anybody else from Budget and Planning wanted to mention while we're here? When we proceed with scheduling the public hearing and bring it back to you for one question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda, next Commissioner, you have press conference at nine thirty.
them every day and the caring community members will help create safe nurturing spaces for kids to thrive. And whereas when we invest in quality early childhood education and care, we give every child, no matter their background, a strong start and brighter future. Now, therefore, we, the Riley County Board of Commission proudly proclaim the week of April fifth through April eleventh, twenty twenty five as the week of the young child in Riley County, Kansas. Encourage all residents to take part in supporting our youngest community members. Together, we can build strong foundations for our children, our families, and the future we all share.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
We're gonna take sure.
And one, two, three, big smiles. One, two, three. One last one, two, three.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just saying, we've got some KAC, or KAC, service awards, which are for eight years of service in Riley County. First, we've got Heather Ritchie. But thank you for all your service.
Get a photo op.
Not gonna be away from Kim here.
Yeah.
We've got Derek. And next we got Wesley James.
Thank you. You know, a lot of smiling.
Yes. Next, we got Renee Barish. Sheriff, you know, tell her if it's still there.
Two, three.
Yes, thank you. Steve, Steve Charlie.
It's hard, it's too big.
Jesse.
One, two, three.
Final one, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all your service to the county.
Make sure he has Bob. Isaac at nine forty-five. Good, good. Yeah. Fucking reverse. Just keep what she says. Good.
No worries.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
Morning, folks. Our first box has made application with Roddy County Planning and Development requesting to rezone a portion of two unplanted tracks from I two heavy industrial to A G agricultural district. The two parent tracks are owned by the same Shilling Gate family trust. These, the subject property is generally located approximately three thousand two hundred and twenty-five feet south of Pillsbury Drive on the east east of McDowell Creek Road. The subject property, as mentioned in the description, is a portion of two unplanted tracks. So an I two heavy industrial and A G agricultural district both. That portion zone I two heavy industrial shown here in purple, as a remainder of the parent tracks, uh, zone agriculture are shown in gray. Uh, these areas were likely zoned heavy industrial due to the quarrying activity occurring at the site at the time of the countywide zoning conversion process in nineteen seventy-four. The quarrying operation has long been discontinued, though the property remains the zone heavy industrial. Uh, the practice of rezoning property to heavy industrial zoning designation for quarries or borrow pits was discontinued several years ago in favor of utilizing a conditional use in the Hagg district to serve those purposes. However, there are still several remnants of heavy industrial zone tracks left over from that time throughout the county. The applicant wishes to eventually build a home on that site, but needs to eliminate the heavy industrial zoning of the property. Though this rezoning action would not result in immediate or automatic approval for that to occur. Uh, the approve or the property owner of both tracks agreed that the heavy industrial zoning needs to be changed to reflect the current and future use of the property. Uh, Roddy County Fire District number one serves the site, the nearest county fire station is Kanza Fire Station, uh, located at three hundred Johnson Road. The subject site is located within five road miles of a fire station. The request was reviewed with the twenty fifteen Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. The subject site is located within the southeast planning area. Uh, the future land use map indicates that the subject site is projected for agricultural use. Uh, table three of the plan, uh, tip three dash one of the plan states that continuation of agricultural uses is encouraged within the context of both market demand and the desires of individual property owners. And residences are typically limited to those for owners, operators of the agricultural enterprise. It is staff's opinion that although the preservation of agricultural lands and uses within the Manhattan urban area somewhat de-emphasized with expectation that the Manhattan urban area will eventually urbanize. The request is in conformance with the, uh, the plan. So on March thirteenth, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board heard the request and unanimously forwarded a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners based on the reasons listed in the staff report. Staff recommends, uh, the, the plan recommended that the planning board board recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, to approve the request to resume the subject property based on the following. The request is in general conformance with the goals and objectives of the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. That recommends that the Board of County Commissioners accept that recommendation of the planning board and approve the request to rezone the subject property as it has been determined that it meets the requirements of the Roddy County zoning regulations and is in conformance with the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me.
Yeah, in here it says something about a zip line in the future.
No. Yeah, that's not probably. It's actually right here.
Oh, okay.
Zip line, it's already there.
Yeah, I was thinking.
I'm gonna make a motion to sign resolution zero three, three, one, two, five. Approving the request to rezone an unplanted tract of land from I two heavy industrial to A G agricultural districts. It's a shorter motion than most of the time.
Okay, I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, sign resolution zero three, three, one, two, five. Approving the request to rezone an unplanted tract of land from I two heavy industrials to A G agricultural district, all in favor?
Hi. Bye.
All three, please sign. Thanks, Bob. Mike, how you doing?
I'm good.
Good. Yep. Well, the game.
Yeah. Something signed, Bob.
Just that resolution sort of.
No miler today?
That was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess.
Big one, big one. It's a.
Yes, portion of the track.
Yeah.
That track was like.
First I was looking at.
Yes, there is.
I'd verify that with the planning board as well.
Oh, okay.
Next, Commissioner, you have Amanda Webb at ten.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mike, we're good.
Play. Only you can hide it.
Yeah. Got that too.
Okay.
They should be getting out of here. Guys, we've just run through trucks. So they're just moving the next door to. The box. A bit of.
Sorry.
Oh. It is. You'd say.
So the only good thing was I'm ready to announce in the twelve month. There's fire. Vehicle on fire. Hmm. You see Manhattan's Riley, I've heard of it before, so.
Yeah, it was a big one, I was like seven here for the weekend.
Well, there was.
Yeah. Right off the margin field.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You said just at the edge of the construction. That's what you figured out. How, like, how did you hear that? When they close out.
I'm sorry, I'm moving up to John's place.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I said I could come in, yeah, says, shall come across Marla. Oh, or. Pete wrote and around, it's a man a trailer, Seth Charles. And sort of like, oh, it's a massive morning.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you got that extra stop light coming in from that direction up in Marla.
Yeah.
Yes, they did get the, um, stoplights in over there, Campbell and Dennison. Should be open back up today.
No, good. Yeah.
Let's see that big. Roughly, yeah.
Sounds like put the welcome to on there. That'd be cool. I don't think South Dennis is up yet, I think they're still working on it.
So who goes to the, that's.
Yeah, yeah. It's pieces of that probably until like Mayish or something.
And speaking of, gotta have nice things that look nice. That big arch over there.
Yeah.
State legislature. It's got big economic development at the state.
They what?
They, they voted against it.
I thought that was the federal. Grandpa.
Well, they went to the state, apparently. I know, I know, person works there.
Did hear something about that.
Yeah, I don't.
It's not. It's too.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director. I'm here with our monthly, uh, comprehensive plan update report. Um, so lots has been going on, which I'm very excited about, so glad to be able to provide a good report to you folks. Um, the comprehensive plan committee, the subcommittees have been, um, meeting over the last several weeks. Um, the current conference, uh, the current committee roster is attached in your packet and it's online. Uh, we, as we talked about, we have had some new folks, some folks who have had to, you know, drop off just, just as, as things. Uh, we, as we talked about, we have had some new folks, some folks who have had to, you know, drop off, just just as as things have gone on. But that's the current one that we have there. Um, and again, so the different, um, subgroups have been meeting. Um, on Monday, um, we're gonna have some time together to kind of talk about what the subgroups have been talking about. Kind of where they are, their next step, some of their draft goals, some some bits are a little bit further along than others. Um, so we can talk about, um, you know, again, some of the input that you provided so far. Our folks an update on that, um, kind of make sure it aligns with some of the things you're thinking about. Um, if there's any, um, direction or any thoughts you might have that we can then provide to, um, the subgroups as they're kind of finishing up their work. Um, to fit into the schedule, um, to get the project done, um, by fall. Stan Tech requested that the subcommittees complete their work roughly in mid-May. Um, but again, all of this is is everything's gonna be ongoing until we're done, if that makes sense. Um, but of course, we want to be, you know, pro- progressing along and and making sure we're getting the input and things. Um, so that's kind of what the committees are up to, um, right now, so a lot more in depth we'll talk about. Um, we have some more time together on Monday. Um, stakeholders, this is a separate group from the comprehensive plan committee, although you will notice that we have some entities and some folks. That serve on the committee that will also be stakeholders. Stakeholder, everybody, we talked to a little bit more in depth, these are people where we're gonna wanna ask more in-depth questions, more specific targeted questions. To get, um, input specific to their agencies or their agency's needs or entities or whatnot. So we can really make those considerations in, um, the plan as well. And you'll see, um, kind of the current list that we're working off of. Um, I do wanna say that this is not necessarily a complete done, this is it sorted list, probably more will kind of come up as we go. Um, but this is, um, the list that has been compiled so far from Stan Tech, our consultant. Um, county staff and and some suggestions from the comp plan committee itself. We have been able to hold a few of the stakeholder interviews, um, already. We're, um, we're trying to be very, very flexible, so if we can meet in person, great. If a virtual meeting works better, or a phone call, or an email with the questions. We wanna make this as easy as possible for folks to give us their input, so. Uh, we had some who have asked for, you know, if you can send us a list of questions, they'll, you know, send back an email. We've had a couple of, um, uh, virtual, I have a few, um, in-person schedules for this week. Um, so we're really trying to work through this list of diverse, different, um, entities, so we can get their perspectives and more in-depth, um, information. So, um, looking at this list, if you folks can think of anything now, or anything in the future that you're thinking, hey, let's let's include so and so. Um, that would be, you know, more in-depth stakeholder, please just let me know. I'm sorry.
Fort Riley.
Fort Riley, um, I guess they're not on, I mean, they're definitely, we have a couple of folks from Fort Riley on our our comp plan committee, but yes, it makes sense to have them as a stakeholder, so. Thank you for that. And actually, I think, I think I just missed putting them on here, because I know our consultant is working to get in touch with somebody over there, so. That Kelly is on our, um, comp plan committee as, oh, and in case we were gentlemen. Um, so, yeah, we're we're working on a couple of folks over there, so.
Have to reach out to Katie and Jason and Amanda too. Probably think of a few more.
Cause again, as as I've always been saying with this, we want all the perspectives, all the input, you know, these different entities from the public. You know, we want this plan to be as comprehensive as possible, and there's a lot of different pieces that that go into it, so, thank you for that. Um, consultants, um, they're still kind of doing a lot of, um, background work in addition to the stakeholder interviews that they're helping to coordinate. Um, they're still working on their existing edition study, it's it's a little bit, um, delayed, um, but we're hopefully gonna get that here as soon as possible. Um, basically, once we do get that, we'll kind of review in-house if you will, just to make sure everything, you know, things are correct and, you know, complete. And then, of course, that'll that'll be released publicly, that is, of course, a document that will be available. Um, for folks to review, I'll I'll bring it to you folks as well, so you can see all, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that. Um, have that available for, um, for public viewing. Um, going off of that, we do have our first, um, community workshop. I guess our our, we've, of course, had a lot of community workshops in the past, so I shouldn't say the first, but the first one of twenty twenty-five, we'll say it that way. Um, we're gonna have a community workshop on Wednesday, May fourteenth at six P M. upon fall. Um, that will be to talk to the community about the existing conditions, um, and the market analysis, that will all be part of that study that they're going to do. Basically, again, the existing conditions is just that, kind of where we are now, um, with everything. Um, so then we know kind of what our starting point is, and we're gonna go from there, so. Of course, Stan Tech staff will be on, and of course, county staff will be there to, um, go over that information with the community and and get information from them. Um, they're going to, um, do all kinds of advertising for that, um, and I'll talk to, um, Vivian, of course, to see what we might supplement with that as well. But they do have plans to get, um, the word out far and wide to the community to make sure people are aware of that, so we can get, hopefully get as much, um. Much attendance as possible at that, so. And again, the the, once we have it and it's ready for release. Um, the study will be on our website, so if somebody can't make it to the workshop or any whatnot, or they think of something after. You know, people can, of course, always let us know, there's there's, people can email me, there's a dedicated email address, there's lots of ways for people to. Still give us input, even if they can't necessarily make it to a specific workshop. So all input is always welcome. Um, any questions about anything I've talked about so far? Okay, now we get to have some fun. Okay, so, um. Maybe I'm the only one thinks it's fun, but. What's that?
Do we need to go to the chairs?
Probably not this time, but thanks for the thought. Um, okay, so we've talked before about, um, this plan's identity. Uh, we've talked a little bit about, um, you know, doing a logo, doing title, tagline, all those sorts of things for the plan, so it can be differentiated. This is Riley County's comprehensive plan. Um, what I included in your, um, packet is the results of a survey we did last year. Um, just get gathering some input from folks about a few different options for a potential logo. Yet nothing is set in stone, we can, we can discard all of those, we can keep the Riley County logo, we can. There's, there's all kinds of things we can do, of course, or or you folks can do, of course. Um, but those are just the ones that we had put out there just to get people's opinions on. And then we also, um, gave, uh, four options for a title and four options for a tagline. And where those, um, titles and tagline options came from was just keywords that we gathered from all of the public input that we got from. Community workshops that we did and the, uh, public input survey that we did originally. So we just kind of pulled together some phrases based on a lot of the different words and different input we were hearing from those. Um, I will say again, if you don't like any of them, that's okay, we don't have to use these. Um, these were again done before we had the consultant, so the consultant might have some input they can provide. If you folks have some input you can provide, but I wanted to have the conversation with you guys to see, you know, what what you were thinking. If you do like any of them, if you're like, no, none of these are fitting, let's try again. Um, just to kind of get some initial thoughts, um, from you folks, so we kind of know which direction to go. Um, this, the consultant was asking about, you know, cause as they start giving us deliverables, we'll want. To have, if we do choose to have a specific logo for this plan, um, you know, they'll wanna. You know, kind of have that on on the deliverables, so we know all of that's together, if that makes sense. And of course, I still envision, you know, the Riley County logo being on everything, because of course, it is a Riley County product, so. Um, but just if we want to differentiate and have this have its own logo, if not, at the very least, we do wanna have the, uh. Title and tagline, so we can identify this project. So, any initial thoughts on kind of the the services you're seeing? Um, and some of the options that were provided as part of that? Anything you hate, anything you love, anything you want to, hey, this this is good, but what if we, you know. Mix it up a little bit, you know, kind of thing, so. Just wanna get some thoughts.
Where would this logo go?
Um, probably everything would at the very least be on the front page, um, and then, you know, of course, the the title, tagline, the logo of the project. Probably be in some nice, you know, a a collage of of pictures and whatnot on the front page as well. Um, and then it's just kind of a matter of, I, you know, as as we're putting the document itself together, you know, just kind of. You know, how we wanna fit the logo in, you know, into the document at all, if there's more than just kind of the cover page or table contents, that sort of thing, so. Just how we wanna fit it in there. We're always gonna wanna call it, so we'll have our title and our tagline, and then Riley County Comprehensive Plan twenty forty. Cause we do wanna make sure people know it's comprehensive plan, and some of these don't necessarily lend itself to say this means comprehensive plan. So we'll, of course, wanna say that on there, but if we wanna call it something else.
Have have you worked with our, like a better word, media person, Vivian, on on an adult issue?
Yes, yeah, she actually quit, put the survey together.
Uh, I meant on the logo.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's not true.
Because we've had a big discussion on giving the logo, the Riley County logo on it.
Yeah, and and again, you know, I I do envision, of course, the Riley County logo would be on it as well, because it is ultimately Riley County, of course. It's just if we want to have, you know, an additional, some sort of image that represents, we're talking about Riley County's comprehensive plan. Um, so it's really, you know, again, up to you folks, if you wanna have something separate for it, or if we just wanna use the standard Riley County logo. And then just focus on title and tagline. So.
We designed the logos, and I kind of look at some of them and wonder what they represent. What are three different, what are three different colored octagons doing? To identify us with Riley County, and that's the thing, what, how does any of this identify us as Riley County? But, yeah, I just thought a couple of them were rather interesting.
Yeah, the octagons.
Some of our different colors.
What's that? Oh, hex, are they, I didn't even.
Think if you look at the results, logo options. And here she is. She heard us talking about her.
The one with the sun.
Yeah, so that was the one that was the most popular, um, according to the survey at least, so. And you can kind of see, you know, of course, what, you know, some of those different pieces sort of represent of Riley County. And again, I'm not trying to force you into using any of these, or if you're still more comfortable with with our standard Riley County logo. That's okay. Um, I would, again, I would encourage, you know, let's think of a good title and tagline to go with Riley County Comprehensive Plan. Um, but again, if you're if you're more comfortable with just keeping our standard logo, that's okay, I'm not here to push anything on you.
Is the other one? I've got it, I haven't looked at, well, they exist, they're twenty twenty-five, they have a different logo on it.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah. House or something on there.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost more like a little. Yeah. Yeah, more more of an image, less of a logo, if you will.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my initial initial question, because the board's had a couple of discussions. Catherine said about logo, and just to be sure and work with Vivian, be sure we're following. The guidance right now is current policy, everyone knows we're working on the policy, but. Everything following current policy, since that's the message to previous departments that have been with for this, but the board can change that at any time as well.
Kind of, but I'm honestly not digging any of it, I'm sorry. Um, if I guess I have the logos, this is probably the best of the bunch, but the taglines and stuff, I'm not, I'm not really digging.
Tagline, you don't like?
Uh, the title, yeah, I'm not, I'm not digging either one of them.
And again, those were just put together from the keywords, you know, some of the more common phrases.
Let's keep trying.
And really, what I would recommend, and you and I can talk about this some more, is to, when the plan is finished and finalized. If there is something that comes out of that, that kind of summarizes or can be a tagline or representation. I think that would probably be a better time to to explore. Um, and then we had, we'd had some discussion, we'd done the the artwork kind of before we went through the. Um, the local guidelines, policy, and kind of got that back up and running, so you might need to rethink.
Yeah, this was last year that we did this, that we have this survey out there last springish, spring, summer, let me say.
So this is option two in that chart?
Yes, yeah, I'm only showing that one just because it was the most popular month for.
I've, if you're choosing out those four, that's probably the one I would go with, but. Don't think the Riley County logo's gotta be incorporated in that somewhere. Terms of the titles and the taglines, I'm not. Not really feeling, you know, I'm sorry.
We have Amanda and Vivian work on it and bring it back to shore to clarify, I mean, the thing is that.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
They've done this before, they might know what type of things we need to help conduct.
See what's done, what else Vivian's been done with special projects, I mean, at the end of the day, remember it is Riley County, Riley County's funding this.
I was trying to, or how we'd fit the logo into the Riley County logo into that, and it'd be really tough because of the. I mean, it could be this big.
We can also maybe do some mockups, just so you maybe can see what various options look like, um, so you can see it visually, maybe on a page.
Sounds fair.
Yeah, come up with some other options, and if you folks think of anything, hey, I like this phrase, or maybe if you could. Fit this word in, you know, sort of thing, please just let me know.
You know, those are the things. The title, I guess. Shaping tomorrow and balancing growth time more than the other two. And then the one of this, that honor our past, nurture our futures, and stuff of those four, it'd be, it's still good.
Yeah, that's kind of corny. Sorry. Uh, not for this, it's not.
Back to the drawing board a bit, a little idea, not corny. And then, um.
Yeah, no dad jokes.
I'll have to work on that.
I can also give you, and and nothing that I provide to you to try to force you, here's the options, pick one. But I can also give you some of different comp plans that I've seen before, to just different titles. I mean, they all have just different things.
I could probably Google that too.
Or, yeah, or that, I mean, it's really just up to you.
Yeah.
You folks, you know, what you wanna call it.
Use A I Gemini or something, I'll let them come up with some.
Now, wasn't that fun?
Very pleasant.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Meyer at ten twenty.
Before I would say, I saw all those, all those wires over at the EMS building, I don't know how you.
I did see a couple of weeks back, yeah.
He's wondering the same thing.
Yeah, I saw the whole panel and stuff sitting there.
Actually, some of the, they were numbered. Number two and number one.
Yeah, um.
That must have been quite a job getting that in.
When the job gets that big, that's why we, uh, we bring in somebody else. When the job gets that big, that's why we, uh, we bring in somebody else. Yes, yes, indeed, so, yeah. Well, it's, I'm glad that everybody's yet to go through and look over there and everything, that's, that's good, so. Um, Corey Meyer, IT GIS Director here for staff update, um. Gonna, little bit about, uh, uh, what we're going on in GIS first, and I'll work my way back up, uh. The ASRI Conference is coming up, I've got two going out to that, Jake and Cherry, uh, Jake does approve. Proven him to be a presenter out there, uh, which is exciting. Um, he's also got some correspondence going on with, uh, uh, somebody who met last year at conference and a. Project that we are looking to start into. Uh, to help create some tools and stuff for the appraisers office, so we got some upcoming meetings, uh, with them. And, uh, which are, are really gonna help their process and the, the most readily available info, or, or the most important information they have. Simplified to some screens form with maps and links to, so some, some cool things there that are gonna, that we're gonna be working on. But, uh, we've been going through some, uh, testing for some upgrades that we have coming. Um, we're starting conversations on a section type project, we wanna go out and identify. Um, section ties, um, get some better accuracy on some of those, which then relates. It's to more accurate maps, more accurate acreage calculations, which, um. Does then affect on into the appraisers, of course, the patrons of the county. And then, uh, the city's contacted us for discussions about, um, doing a light art imagery. Um, light art being the topographical, you know, so we know, you know, peaks and valleys and ups and downs. Blood potential areas, those kind of things, um, they're interested in, uh, uh, doing a flight twenty six, um. And asked if we would be interested in adding on. The entire county portion of the county and so forth, we're in discussions of those costs, a little bit of the history on that, last time light art was done. For the entire county was in two thousand fifteen. Um, that project was a, around a hundred thousand dollar project to be done.
That's about eight times the amount now.
And so it will be interesting to see where those costs lay, um, they are in the process of getting. Getting us an idea of what that would be, um, and again, like with the, uh. The other, the, the imagery flight to do, we can pick areas that we want to have, um. An, an increase or a, a better set of imagery, um, than we do other parts, um, so. It, uh. It'll be an interesting conversation, I'm gonna talk with other departments as well and see what. Uh, use of our light are they are, or what they're using from our two thousand fifteen flight. Um, talk about how it would be used again. Uh, we did also talk with the state and some others, Riley County is not on the. Scope of projects that maybe the state or somebody would be doing a lighter white, uh. Within the next five to seven years, so, um. But, uh, it, it could be something of interest that we might wanna do, know how the various waters and things have affected the county. Maybe decisions on. Various road areas, heights, I, I don't know what that would be, but I'm gonna talk to other departments and where it's used at, uh. But, so there'll be more to come on that. Um, in IT world, um, some of the normal day to days that we have going on and so forth, but, uh. A lot of our time, um, is, is being taken up, uh, in, in security as of late, um. There have been, uh, fortunately, a county in the northeast that was down for quite some period of time. We're hoping to find out some information on what happened to them so that. We can look and check our own systems and see that we are, uh. Uh, preventing whatever happens to them, trying to keep things vague and nonspecific in that area of security to work as a time. Those are what are always, always on our mind, EMS building, we're about ready to get real busy in there. We're hitting the time, uh, where it's, it's time for us to go in and start moving equipment, cameras, checking the network, getting it all up and going. Um, right now, we're on track for that to be in the month of May, um, but we'll be in and out of there a little bit in April. Uh, the EM building, the EM remodel or the old EMS meetings kicking up, uh, there and going through. So we're working with our vendors on our side of things as far as. Cost pricing and then the meetings, uh, with the, with the building team as we go through and, and making some of those. Decisions and suggestions and so forth, um. One of the discussions we'll need to be is, uh, talking with John is, is, uh, has, has been brought up is, uh, where. We might move the VOCC to, uh, in, uh, in August, so forth, window project, so. We're having some discussions, uh, and, uh, we will also gonna talk with Diane. And it's, we're talking about EMS or F C R C or something out there in that area, but we'll be coming to you with, uh. Where we'd like to go, and one of the questions be, do you wanna have an office that you can go to? Which, which I think that you might, if these offices are not available, I've. Got a location where that might be as well, which is out there, and so we would establish an office for you. And a lot of times, you get done with a commission meeting and then maybe you go to office and then have a meeting with somebody after, so. Uh, I've also identified, but again, those are discussions I'm gonna finish out with, with them before we. We go about that, but that's moving forward as well. More of our phone system change that we're preparing for, so we're gonna start to move fax lines in these four buildings over to a different service, um. We're looking that we will move to the Webex phone system, um, in, uh, probably be July or August. Once the, the EMS building is settled into that, then we'll make that move. Um, the Minute Track Replacement or Civic Clerk product is moving forward, just had a great training session with. What we consider to be our power users, our, our users that put a lot of information into that system, so we went through training with them. They're being hands on with it, uh, this week to go through and bring back any questions, concerns, issues they have. And then, uh, we're sitting on if it all played out, what might be a possible May one go live, but we have time where we can adjust that. The training and understanding the product is what's most important. The next thing that our group is gonna see is, uh, an understanding of how the minutes go in. And your portion of seeing the product, and so we're gonna look at that as, as our group. And then schedule time with you, we don't want it to be a waste of your time, we wanna make sure that we get through it and go see it, see it, how's it work? And then ask what questions, we might understand what those, and then bring you into a training and understanding, that way we're making best use of your time. That also includes Rich there as the minute taking portion, Cindy and so forth, that's moving forward. The, uh, EMR replacement, uh, Diane and her team have done a great job, they've done a couple of, uh, site visits, been working with the council's office on the. RFP, uh, Jacob has gotten the, uh, a draft out to us, looking at that process, um. Elizabeth involved, Brittany involved, all of the, you know, team members that need to be on those, and so we're, we're moving forward with that for an RFP to. To be going out, uh, here in the month of April, I think is where we, we, we settled that on, so that's moving along, uh, very well. Inventory monitors, those kind of things, the normal, uh, we're getting ready to identify laptop, desktop replacements, um. Next weekend here, uh, after Monday's meeting. Um, and we have this room blocked off, but that's when we will be doing the, uh, AV upgrade in here. And so changing out mics, sound and all those kind of things, so Monday the seventh. After the meeting is done, and then on Tuesday and Wednesday, we will be in here doing work with Ready Systems, who we, uh. We agreed to go forward with that, so doing an upgrade in here. Uh, we're working on a, uh, AV upgrade over an F C R C in the upper. Uh, level in that conference room as well out there, uh, and do a better job in the sound, microphones and so forth, uh. And, and that one, large conference room there. Potter Hall, uh, has actually got some work going on right now, uh, I've got a, a staff out there and Jerry's out there, they're putting up some, uh. Some mounts right now for some TVs and speakers, the, uh, the, uh, I believe it was the Fair Board and so forth, I believe they. Prove to do a little bit of upgrades out there, so no more drop down screens and projectors, they're gonna have nice clear quality TVs out and stuff out there. Items that can be moved if something were to happen in the future, yes, yes, thinking, uh, thinking of. Um, then, uh, um. Just some other things that have gone on, it's that time of year where, well, who knows what the weather's going to bring, and that was this kind of a weekend, um. We, uh, interestingly enough, and, and just to let you know of times that like. Out of town, uh, Friday and Saturday, but a phone call at six thirty of. Uh, some sort of noise going off in the building, in this building, turns out to be, there was a smoke detector and thanks to John for. I called John when I got the call and he got Jerry and they come down and those kind of things, but those evening and weekend things happen, uh. Ever G's power outage on Saturday caused troubles. Um, actually, Community Corrections called me cuz they had a staff member that got locked out of the building and I was out of town. Uh, got older John and he came down and he and the dog got to go on a car ride, let him in, so, you know, they were both happy, so, yeah.
The dog didn't appreciate me hanging my head off the window.
But we're still working through some residual of that power outage, um, it's causing some trouble over in Carnegie, Barry called me at nine o'clock last night. Um, he was in and some issues and. I worked through and got part of it up and going, and then we're continuing to work on it this morning still, uh, but, um. It's, uh, it's just those, those kind of things that happen, um, but, um. But we're here to take care of anything that, that comes up and goes on, and again, thanks to great staff with John and so forth to help when it comes to things as well. So, but, and my style, so, any questions for me?
Looking forward to the upgrade.
Yeah, a lot going on, lots of great stuff, lots of cool things happening, so, yeah, it's exciting, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thanks for, thanks for mentioning John Owen, ten thirty five.
Morning, Commissioner John Ellerman, Public Works, um, this morning, I'm here to ask to start advertising for seasonal help. These, most of these positions have been built by the parks crews, um, are in the parks division. The past, we've had maybe up to three, maybe four, um, I think there's four or five. Temporary seasonal divisions after that, between parks and public works. Um, these would mainly be for parks, we're not planning anything for public works yet, so, um. Yeah, just doing the, helping with mowing, trimming, cleaning flower beds, picking up trash at the parks. It's just the normal stuff that it helps out crews, um, they do a lot of help. Work at the fair and mow by, full time crews are at the fair. Um, the two, three weeks that we've set up and tear down and. Help with things during the fair, so, um, pretty important, uh. And pretty successful, are pretty good about having some pretty decent people, um, come work for us in the summer.
Transition from this position into an actual position of sorts, see who I'm going with this?
It's happened in the past, but it hasn't happened recently, you know, because of the time. Whatever, a lot of them, a lot of college students, high school students, and then we have to have that opening of that next level at the same time. So it has happened, but it's not.
I'm just thinking. Higher for the summer than those kids that are now supposed to be done in May, then would have an opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely, we just had a. Most fully your employee that started out that way, that just retired recently, so, yeah. Yeah, no, definitely good, it's always good for us to keep it in front of the center, it's a good opportunity for them to show their work ethic and.
And learn over the summer and then transition into a position. Should we not train them, or something that maybe we can't seem to fill?
We have had some turnover in our parks and that, I know, I know there's been people David would like, I mean, he. He, he really is particularly hires and hire people who can really do the job he wants, and so he would like to give something to them, I'm sure.
Do you get very, many of them returning from year to year, like college students?
Not too many, every, honestly, I think when I first started, we had. One or two come back for a second year, I've not, I've not seen. That many, more than two years, for sure.
That's something we really had luck with from even high school, but Manhattan High and the college that we get some of those kids to stay with us four, five, six years.
Yeah, we have to be just careful that it's the eighteen around the equipment. We tend to get stuck in there.
Yeah, they're usually eighteen year old, high school seniors, you know, like we have right now, Tandy's daughter in elections and. We expect her to be with us through college, most likely.
We've had really good luck with some office jobs like that, we've had several to crazers during elections, different places where they're, you can hire the high school level.
I think that's something.
Year, not just for the summer.
Uh huh, uh huh, there's, we have some of both, and some are just during the busy election season, the busy years too, you know. One, we're gonna be hiring back that we just released last year, cuz we didn't have the work and gonna be getting him back for this next election, so.
And we just mentioned, since we're talking about this, this position is currently graded at four, starting at fourteen dollars an hour, and. For experience or some bench, but like the position's richest time about, we're graded at fifteen dollars an hour, just the lowest rate. I don't know that it's necessarily related, but just something for you guys to keep in mind. I know David has discussed it with me a couple of times, trying to get a little bit higher.
He thinks that's part of it. Some of these kids maybe can go home or not and get a little bit more pay or be at home to do that.
Well, I would. I would make a motion to approve filling the seasonal park, is it parks positions?
It's actually public works.
Through public works.
And it's more.
Good move in seconds, approve, uh, filling seasonal parks positions. Public Works, all favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, John.
That's, that's it, huh?
Unless you want more, we can schedule the rest of the afternoon.
No, 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 that's already upcoming, so. No, I'm good, I don't have anything else.
Me neither.
Motion then to adjourn the March thirty first meeting of Riley County Commission, that's a cool picture.
I'll second that.